Ladies and gentlemen, would you please rise? Join Councilman Taylor in the salute and remain standing for our prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you bow with me? Our heavenly Father, we just ask that today you be with our country. And for those that have lost loved ones this week and the tragedy and the sickness that we see in our country, we just ask that you would heal our land. Your word says that if we would come confess our sins, that you would heal our land. And I pray that our country gets back to its senses and comes to you. Thank you for our country. Thank you for our community here. Thank you for these men and women that serve here and make our country and our town a place of glory to live. Thank you for tonight. Thank you for this meeting. And I ask that you grant us all wisdom. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
You're welcome.
Called to order, our Guthrie Public Works Authority Meeting of October 3rd. Second item on the agenda is community announcements. Do we have any community announcements?
Nope.
No? Third item on the agenda is the consent agenda. One item is the approval of the minutes of our Public Works Authority of September 19th.
So moved.
Have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Submit your votes, please.
I'll let them know.
See the votes. Unanimous approval from all those present to approve that consent agenda. Item number four, continuation of our workshop discussion over the previous hour concerning the downtown bridge drainage and green outdoor space. Staff, first or Bill?
I think we just continue where we left off on the final page of the PowerPoint presentation relative to the project estimate. And I don't know if we can put that up on the screen. But as we were discussing, when you look at the four phases of the project, demolition of the bridge at Harrison Street and at stadium, downtown drainage, and then the improvements to add to the downtown event center, again, that does not include any property acquisition, and then the downstream. Of those four, the downstream drainage improvements are not eligible for the funding through ACOG, on the block grant program they have through funding from Department of Transportation. So if you wait and do that as a later phase, because potentially we could find maybe some matching funds at some point, but that would mean that you are going to have periodically water surcharging to the football field and the baseball field. But if we applied for the grant funds through ACOG, we can get 80% of the funding for construction. Not only, it doesn't include any right-of-way acquisition, engineering cost surveying, but then your project, the local share, instead of roughly $6,500,000 or $5 million if you take out the downstream portion, our share would drop to 1.8 million. And then we would be eligible for about 3.2 million grant. If we did that, the timing for this next round of applications at ACOG is we would need to adopt a resolution on the project at our next meeting on October 17th. We would submit that resolution with maps and budget to ACOG by October 31st. They would make the application available on November 1, and the deadline to apply for this round of applications is December 15th. And funding for approved projects would be available on October 1 of 2018 if we were able to get that funding.
And of course, there's no guarantee that in fact we would get that funding.
Correct.
And I've done a lot of these projects for other cities through the same fund, not through ACOG, but through the same fund at ODOT. ACOG acts like a clearinghouse for all their members. And basically, they score the projects and then submit them to ODOT for funding. But typically, what happens is it might take one year, maybe sometimes two years of application to get them, to get you funded. And then what that gives us, the beauty of that is it gives us time to do planning, to do design, if we need to do any utility relocations, it gives us time to do all that kind of stuff. So it's not a bad situation when you're getting ultimately 80% paid for. It's not a bad thing. I mean, Oklahoma City uses the same fund. Elk City's used it. It just takes a little bit of time. And there's no guarantee you're going to get it, but we need to, well, the old saying is you lose every grant that you don't apply for. So...
And whether or not you decide to go ahead and do the downstream part of it and fund it 100% local or look at other funding sources, that's really not going to affect applying for this grant, because it's not grant-eligible anyway.
That's right.
And even the bridge, I mean, the $544,000 waiting until next spring to find out if we can get 80% of that project paid for, we hate to see the roadblocks up, but it's really not hampered traffic to any large extent on that street.
I mean, that's what I'd like to see us do if we can, is to be patient. Let's apply for this, and let's, we can go ahead and start doing design and planning. And then if we come, if the funding comes, it's great. And then if we can't wait, say for the bridge, for example, then we do it, and then ultimately it'll get funded. I've, ultimately, it will come through.
Bill, in your experience, and Leroy, in your experience, is there a benefit to going with a full package of the bridge, the downtown solution, and the event center for the funding purpose, or going in three separate, three separate applications?
I would like to vet that out with ACOG a little more between now and your next meeting, to see what they recommend, and with Leroy. Because I talked with them today, and they, we went back and forth. And I think that, you know, they thought it might be nice to just do the bridge by itself and do the other project by itself, but they also said if we did them together, we maybe could then, you know, break them out later. So we need to, let us vet that out a little bit, if you don't mind.
All right. Well, clearly, the, I mean, the opportunity to compete for funding, 80% funding, is a positive. There's no guarantee of that.
Right.
And even at that, the 20% is a fairly sizable chunk of money.
Well, that's what I want to talk about real quick. I'm not following, I follow the numbers. I know where we're at here. Look at the bridge demolition and improvement of 544 grand and the drainage improvement of 1.8 million. I come, and I, without the event center, I'm coming up with 471,000 our part. Okay? I don't know where the, this five, I guess I'm a little confused on the cost here.
Well, what you're going to have is the, okay, so say if you just did, like you were talking, item one and two, for example?
Correct.
Well, okay, so you're going to have engineering fees from local engineering, and then ODOT's going to charge you about seven or eight percent for their engineering for the construction phase. So that is in these numbers where we have contingencies and fees down here. The contingencies are there because we don't know how soon this is going to get funded.
So how much contingencies and fees are on the first two? I guess that's the question. Because we'll have to pay 20% of that, right?
Well, to be safe, you would say, yes. Well, no, you pay all of the engineering and the ODOT engineering and utilities and right-of-way. You pay 20% of the eligible construction cost. So that's what we tried to do here.
Right. Which is what I was doing here.
Okay. It's difficult, because we use the contingencies and fees, we put it on the entire project at the bottom. And then what I tried to do by taking the STBG UZA portion and the local funds, I tried to put what I felt like was the 20% of the total plus, of the total eligible construction, plus what I thought the ODOT engineering would be, and the local engineering, and the utility relocations, and the contingency. And that's where that $1,083 came for, from, on the far-right column, be row number one, two, three, four, five, six.
I guess we're on a different deal. Where are you at?
Do you see what it says? See, it says contingencies and fees go to the far-right column. See the $1,083?
So you didn't split that out necessarily by phase?
No, I just did the total.
Lumped it in for the whole package.
Right. That's where I am.
I'm on this, right here.
That's where I am.
Okay.
Do you have the, do you have the column that says local funds?
Yes.
Okay.
That's 856,315.
If you add up...
That's the downtown event center, is 856,315. The local funds on the other is 544,600, right? But you don't have the drainage local funds there at all.
Are we on the...
544,600 is the construction cost.
Correct.
And then STBG UZA is, that is what is eligible. That's the 80% portion.
I think I know what's going on.
Okay.
Okay. When we put the PowerPoint in on, over the weekend, it was updated. And you may be looking at the first version.
Yeah, because my numbers, I've got bigger numbers.
We only got, yeah, we got blanks on ours.
It's kind of hard to make a decision when you don't have the numbers.
They don't.
Yeah, I think, we just want you to fill in the blank.
Yeah.
No, that's...
Well, the decision will be in two weeks.
Yeah. We'll present the resolution to you then with more exacting numbers.
I'm talking about to even have a debate about the event center or anything else. It's kind of hard to, when you don't have the numbers in front of us.
Right. Yeah. But yeah, they're, the update has, has numbers in all of the columns, Brian. And what we were showing on our little machines here, had a lot of blanks.
It's a little bit better. You bringing us a whole new one?
I knew our mathematics weren't that far different.
Now you're ripping that out from under me. All I needed was the one page.
There you go. It's the last page, Brian.
Yeah, there it is.
That makes more sense.
Yes.
Okay.
So there it is. Because that's the number I was coming with.
I think we're all with you now.
Okay.
I think...
No wonder you guys were looking at me like I was crazy. I was like...
Well, it was going to be a real deal.
Okay.
We got updated information on ACOG and did a revise.
So I guess on the, since we're in an open discussion here on this, on the event center, I don't know that, I mean, we really hadn't even talked about that, other than right here right now, unless I was not present on a council where it happened, which that's probably unlikely. But we haven't really had open discussion on this event center. I don't know how the public feels about it, because I haven't polled them yet, and I will. Have you, Steve, or Jeff, or Cheryl, or anybody?
No, it...
I mean, come on. You can't just do the, you can't make the call on our own here.
No. The, well, and the event center does not receive matching funds or...
What are there, what's...
Yes, it does.
Oh, it does?
Yes, sir.
It does. Oh, it's the down, it's right, it's the downstream.
Downstream.
Downstream that does.
That's all I'm wondering, is what is the...
Well, we've got two weeks to have that dialogue.
Mr. Mayor, I haven't polled people, but I've certainly had a lot of calls where people were excited about it.
Okay, that's what I didn't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have too. And I've also had as many as 50 to 60 people on Facebook that are just excited about this.
And I think we did have some discussion at our retreat on it, so...
We did a little bit, yeah.
There was a poll done at the back-to-school event, and I forget the numbers, but overwhelmingly the responses were supportive of, there's like 80% of the ones that responded were for the event, downtown event.
That was the open streets, that Sunday.
Yes.
And there was a survey that was being done. A number of things were identified, and I know that the event center was one of them, an event center on that, on that side of Division. And there was huge positive response, I remember that.
And I'm not implying it's 100%, everybody's for it.
Right, right. No, I understand.
But the feedback so far, clearly the majority of them that have provided feedback have been supportive.
Very good.
I, one thing I might point out while we're having this discussion, is when we talk about the ACOG grant application, you can have more than one application. And so we are looking at other projects for this as well. Some would be Sooner Road, Inside the Sea Limits, where the shelters are rough, Southwest 19th by the Job Corps, traffic turn signals on Division at Oklahoma and Harrison with the flashing yellow lights, and even the potential of a traffic signal on Division somewhere by the Mission Hills Clinic area. Those are four other potential applications we may bring to you at the next meeting to consider applying for this 80% ACOG money as well.
Now, I will say that, like the signals, if we can get those qualified under the safety program, those are 100%.
That'd be nice.
Yeah. I don't think better than that's 110%.
See, I'm all for the grants. I mean, that's just free money laying out there to some degree.
And I, and also I know that working with INCOG out of Tulsa, once these projects are funded, you can still do some modifications to the project, and as long as funding's available.
My concern is what if, I know you say that, well, we'll get funded, but what if we didn't get funded? We got a bridge issue. A big bridge issue.
I think that the scenario would be, since we'll know by next fall, I think we can hold up...
Does it take that long, a year and 15 months to...
Well, we'll know by, actually, we'll know whether we scored on this one by, did I say February? February of this, of '18, '18. And if you do get scored, if you make it, then you get funded in October of '18, which is FY '19, federal.
Okay.
Yeah. So we'll know in February whether or not the project is scored high enough to get funded. At that time, we'll know what our scores are. Is it close enough that we might want to wait and reapply to next year? Because sometimes it takes more than one year to get funded, because you're competing with other communities. If we score low enough, we might say, well, we want to go ahead and do the bridge, and then reapply for the balance of the project.
Right.
But go ahead with the bridge. So I think once we get our scores in February, we'll have a rationale to make a decision on whether to split the project out and go ahead and do the bridge, or reapply again for the full map, for full project.
I might note that this fund's been around for a long time. We have not used it in Guthrie much because of the 20%. Even getting the 20% in the past has been a major obstacle. But this is the first time we've been, we'd even think about even doing a match, and we hadn't even been even in the...
So does that give us a higher scoring, because we haven't taken, we haven't used this fund before?
They're very, they are interested in Guthrie, I know that. And they, I don't know if they have a separate point for that, but I know that it puts us on the, right, because we have, to my knowledge, the only thing we've received is this TAB grant downtown.
Right.
And then we did one in Oklahoma for the sidewalks. That's the only one I can, in my memory, the last 20 years, remember.
Logan County got one for senior road.
Yeah. So, yeah, anyway.
Okay, so we're going to, we need to do some more dialogue with ACOG.
Yes, and we'll come back with, if, I'll give it to Leroy, and we'll get the...
We need to confirm easement issues with the, with the, the bridge and the, all the work there.
Right.
How much can move into the, into the football field?
Gotcha.
I guess we need to have some discussion with the school about...
Yes.
The possible flow of water onto the field.
Right.
As well as, even if we were to construct, how we handle that with all the activities that go on in the school.
Right.
And then, obviously, more dialogue about the event center, too.
Right, yeah. Agreed.
So we've got, we've got our homework for the next couple of weeks.
Okay, we'll be back.
But a, but a great, a great, I think, a great opportunity to solve a problem that's festered for a long time, and create some lemonade out of the lemons with the event center.
Still going to be pretty tart.
Yeah. But some good opportunity.
That's right.
No, I haven't had much sugar to put in there.
Good opportunity. Thank you, Bill.
Yes.
Okay.
Because we're adjourned on that, aren't we?
I guess that is the, we are adjourned on our Guthrie Public Works Authority meeting. I called to order our city council meeting of October 3rd. Second item on the agenda is our consent agendas A through D. A is the approval of the minutes of our special workshop of September 19th. B is the approval of the minutes of our city council meeting of September 19th. C is the approval of the contract between City of Guthrie and Billy Lungnecker concerning the grass management for our 80 acres. D is approval of Resolution 2017-23, supporting the appointment of Mayor Steve Getling to apply for District 8C Board of Directors of the Oklahoma Municipal League.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion of those items? Submit your votes, please.
I'll let them know.
See the votes. Unanimous approval of all those present to approve the consent agenda. Item number three, discussion and possible action on the downtown, I guess we've already had that.
There is one thing that I would recommend, because as we do the research and prepare for the application, there are going to be some engineering fees just in that process. And I just want to make sure that staff has approval, continuing, moving forward, studying this, doing some of the engineering things that are going to be necessary to make application, and want to make sure you're okay with us moving forward on things that we need to be doing, because if we're going to get an application in, some of those things need to be happening.
How much is that?
I don't know. The, I really don't. The main thing is the, we did one of these two, three years ago for something out on college, and it ended up, it was, half the road was in the county. But, you know, you know, I just, I couldn't tell you right now. I mean, the first part, this getting this, this resolution together is very minimal, you know, so the other part, let me, I'll back, come back to you...
I mean, I know it's a hard question, but I just don't like giving blank checks. I don't think anybody else does either.
Okay, $100,000? I'm kidding. Okay, probably, you know...
That's one for Bill Meyer.
There you go.
Yeah.
I don't know, you know, we can probably do it, you know, I would think in...
Gratis this time?
If I, you know, if I could, I would, you know, let's, let me, can I get back to you next time?
Kick that around, sleep on that one.
I will, we'll sleep on that.
I want to kick that one around a little bit.
You don't need anything between now and the next meeting?
No, then we're okay to the next meeting.
Okay.
How's that sound?
All right.
Thank you.
And he's going to sleep on the gratis in the meeting.
No action taken on item number three of our agenda. Item number four, discussion and possible action of Ordinance 3311, amending Chapter 8, Article 2, concerning the discharge of fireworks. Staff, we had a workshop on this.
Based on our understanding of the consensus of opinion at the workshop on this topic, we have prepared two ordinances for your consideration. One of them goes back to what it had been several years ago, and if you look at it in your packet, the only change would be striking the language of at least five acres or more. It would still be, need to be on residential property and not closer than 25 feet from any permanent structure. The only difference between that and the second version of ordinance, same thing, the five-acre provision is taken out, but there is an addition that would take the Capitol historic, Capitol Townsite Historic District out of it and not make it okay to shoot fireworks in the historic district.
Of downtown proper, right?
Right.
Yeah, it's the Capitol Townsite Historic District, and there's a map attached as an attachment to the ordinance that shows you that. And then we have it described in the ordinance itself by lots and blocks.
Yeah. And that's a, is that a separate ordinance?
No, it's either or. It, we, there's two different ordinances. One does, just removes the five acres. The second one removes the five acres provision, but adds in the prohibiting fireworks in that area in the downtown historic district.
So I noticed it takes in the stadium, and I know we had this talk, but do we just give them a special use permit for that, that time? Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. So the second one is the best one, I think.
Well, I think, we were all concerned about, in the historical district, with our building structures and how close they are and so forth. We wanted to protect that, but we wanted to remove that five-acre infringement.
And, and to accommodate the fireworks show, if you don't notice, at the end of paragraph two on the second version, it says, "Unless approved by the city manager or his or her designee." So we would still have the option to approve things like the Red Brick Knights fireworks show.
Okay.
So I would entertain a motion to, for the second version...
Motion. I, so moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second discussion.
I got one question. I didn't get to come to the meeting. I was out for a while.
Okay.
It was late, so want to fill me in on some of that?
Well, the, the major discussion was, the ordinance as it presently stipulates, is that you cannot fire off fireworks in less than five acres, unless you have five acres. You can't fire it off in streets, you can't fire it off within, I forgot what the distance was from a, from a structure. And we just felt that, we just felt that that was an infringement, and...
Well, we actually had a workshop on it, and we had people that attended the workshop that, from people that sold fireworks, people that wanted them. And mainly the ones that sold the fireworks were in the workshop.
And, and that is consistent with Ordinance 3219 that was adopted back in June of 2011.
Right.
And then in 2014 is when the five acres was added. So we're basically going back to what was in place before 2014, that you don't have to have five acres. It still has to be residential property, and then with the second ordinance, you're adding in keeping it out of the Capitol Townsite Historic District.
Okay, and if the chief deems that it's a problem, we don't need to be shooting fireworks off, he will still have the authority to do that?
If, if there is a far hazard, that can be determined at state level or the local level, and yes, they would be prohibited under that condition.
So I got a motion.
Motion, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes, please.
Let's see. I'll let them know.
Let's see the votes. Unanimous approval of the second option of the, of the, this new ordinance. Item number five, discussion and possible action of Task Order Number 128 for Engineering Services, for Myers Engineering to begin preliminary design work for Banner Park. Staff?
I think we have the chairman of the Park Committee that will like to address this issue, and then I may have additional comments when he gets through.
Okay, very good.
All right. I'm Zach Calorio. I, the Parks Board, we all discussed the possibility of turning the Banner Park, the old, or the Banner School, the old site, into a city park. So what we have presented to you, I guess we would recommend that you would approve the Task Order 128 for Phase 1, 2, or 3, to allow Myers Engineering to provide a preliminary design phase and final design phase.
So I've had some people approach with wanting to, me to investigate what it would look like with homes in that area, new homes in that area versus a park, and would it bring more value to that area than a park? I'm not schooled enough on that to know, and so that's kind of out of my wheelhouse, Leroy. So can we talk about that for a minute?
We can, and I'm not sure how you would value... We can, and I'm not sure how you would value that because clearly if you sold the property, it's going to generate revenue for the city. If you build a park, then you're going to be providing an opportunity for recreation. I'm not sure that you can...
I'm talking about revitalization of the area is what I was talking about.
You know, my understanding is residents that live on the west side see the park as a improvement for them that encourages them to continue to strive to make improvements to the west side of the community. There's some value to that. It's land we already own. If we're going to do another park, then you may have to purchase property or... Because a lot of our parks are pretty much developed. So I... You know, it's just a policy decision on whether the city council decides that it makes sense to put more housing. I think if you look at that neighborhood, is that a neighborhood where you're going to see a new subdivision with homes that are in the $200,000 to $250,000 range? Is that a location you think that's going to happen?
Mr. Calorio, the Parks Committee, were they unanimous on the plan that you saw? The...
Yes, yes.
The plan is significant with the park... With the picnic areas, with the splash pad, with the trails, with the sufficient parking, playground, of course. I mean, it's a pretty significant plan.
Yes, yes. And I believe I don't... I mean, I'm assuming you all have seen the differences between the Phases 1, 2, and 3 as far as with the building, putting a city building on there. So that's... It was unanimous. Everybody was on board with it, so...
All right. Good. I know you have another appointment, so I'll let you go.
Thank you.
I'll let you go.
I would point out that the reason that we looked at phases is this gets us to some decision points, but relative to the 4,000 square foot building for Parks Maintenance, we're still exploring if there's an option to purchase a building somewhere else or if we get what used to be the Parks Building downtown back in the next six months. So we're not absolutely sure at this point on the Parks Maintenance Building if we can find a better deal by purchasing an existing building that works for us. Or if we get the old Parks Maintenance Building back, then we may not do that building. So we didn't want to have the architect fees and those kind of things in this... At this stage of the game, once we make that decision, then we would come back and amend this tax order to add those features to it.
So but we need to... What you're looking for us to approve is $82,500 in engineering, right?
To... For the preliminary design work.
That's Architect and Engineering Services.
Correct.
Is preliminary design the survey and staking? Is that part of it?
Right now, we are asking you to approve just $52,000 of that. Then we will come back once we make decisions, and there would be an amendment to add to balance.
Okay.
And I think that this would be better used as the park area. It's already basically been used as a park for the last couple decades by community members just going out there and playing. So might as well formally turn it into a park.
I think it's a good... It's a good asset for the west side of our community that doesn't have a major park facility. And again, I think the park as is conceptualized here would be pretty awesome.
And bear in mind that that is a conceptual plan yet, and there will be some refinements to it, but basically what will be in the park is small, single-family picnic areas, our first splash pad, ADA playgrounds, walking trails, parking, the Parks Department facility, and public restrooms. And I don't know if Aaron can put it up, but this is a sample of the prototype of the type of picnic shelters that we're talking about. And to give you some idea of the type of... And other than the block work, we think that we can purchase those materials and build those in-house. And that's another thing on looking at the final budget for this project. We're still working out on the parts of it that we can actually construct ourselves.
Okay. Good. That's always good. I will entertain a motion to approve Task Order Number 128.
So moved. And it's Option 3.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Submit your votes, please. See the votes. Unanimous approval to move forward with Task Order Number 128, Part 3. Item number six, discussion and possible action on Resolution Number 2017-20, designating an ADA Coordinator for the American with Disabilities Act. Staff?
City Planner Rebecca Blaine put this together, so she will make the presentation on this item and item number seven as well.
All right. Rebecca, first time at the mic.
Thank you. Good evening. So what I compiled that you'll see in the attachments is actually appointing an ADA Coordinator, and that just gives a point of contact for the city for internal and external members to either look for an accommodation if they are needing something that's reasonable. Also, it would let them point out areas that need improvement, that we could add to a plan at a later time, or to make a complaint. And then other attachment that you'll find, it talks about putting together an ADA Advisory Committee, and then it's kind of outlined that each council member would recommend someone to be a part of that committee. And that would just give us a group to handle different things that would come, whether it's putting projects together and a transition plan to make different areas around town ADA compliant, or if someone has a complaint, they would be a part of the review and the action on that. So I've kind of provided that as well as a grievance form, and that would just simply be a form they could fill out. It would be very detailed, talking about other organizations they filed that complaint with, and again, having something, a formal process for that committee to be able to review that.
Rebecca, where did those issues go to in the past?
That might be a city manager question. I'm not for sure.
Well, you've been here a week. You don't know.
Probably went to the city manager.
Yes.
My understanding that ADA was adopted in 1990, and in our limited research, we did not find that the city had ever named a ADA Coordinator. So it probably bounced around to different offices. But what we're doing tonight is if you have 50 employees or more as a public entities, these are the minimum requirements that you're dictated to follow under the federal ADA law.
So are you recommending yourself for that position? Is that what I'm claiming from this?
It is. I'm more than happy to do that. It's very common in Oklahoma communities that someone in the planning or development department take on that position or that role.
Is that going to... What does that take away from the role, your planning role in its own right?
Well, in regards to new development or redevelopment, we should be looking at ADA standards anyways, so I don't think it's going to be a huge addition to that, to what I would normally be looking for in reviewing.
And this role was identified in the job description for the position when we created it.
All right. Okay. I'll entertain a motion then to move forward with Resolution 2017-20, ADA Coordinator in the form of Rebecca Blaine. So moved?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes. See the votes. Unanimous approval of Resolution 2017-20. We now have an ADA Coordinator. Item number seven, I'll entertain a motion then to adopt Resolution 2017-21, which is the establishment of a committee which each member of this council would nominate a person for that seven-person committee.
So moved?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes. See the votes. Unanimous approval of Resolution 2017-21, establishing a Americans with Disabilities Act Advisory Committee. Item number eight, discussion and possible action to adopt Resolution 2017-22, amending the City of Guthrie Personnel Policy to adopt a addendum for Workplace Wellness Policy as well as Workplace Breastfeeding Policy. Staff?
HR Director Mr. Jim Algren will present this one.
I can entertain any questions you might have about it. The two policies, the first one with regard to wellness is really just putting into print what we actually do and support what we do with regard to wellness within the workplace. It's pretty straightforward. We've done a number of things, so it wouldn't really be, in fact, adding anything additional to the city, but would in fact encapsulate what we've already done and putting it into a policy format.
So is there a reason?
Well, do what you say and say what you do. Along with that, we applied and have applied and have received since 2014 recognition for being a certified healthy business, and by having it in writing is helpful. And that's with regard to N, and then on M, the breastfeeding is really a regulation that we need to have, again, in writing and part of our policy. From the perspective of, again, do what you say, say what you do, and we have been doing this, and we're required to do it.
So it doesn't change anything that we've been doing? It just formalizes it?
Exactly, and there's no additional cost either of these two, other than the administrative costs of typing it up and getting it into our policy and procedure manual, getting it on our website.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2017-22.
So moved?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes. See the votes. Unanimous approval of those present to adopt Resolution Number 2017-22, amending the city personnel policies. City Manager Report, item number nine.
We're going to see how well Aaron and I can coordinate as we go back and forth on this. First, we have two CMOM SER collection system projects where the city council has approved a contract in the amount of just over $61,500. It's a replacement of two SER systems. The first one is Area 1, SER main located in an alley between East Perkins Avenue and Grand Avenue from South Birch Street to South Locust Street. The second one that we approved is in the alley between West College and West Washington Avenue from 13th to 14th Street. And those projects started on September 19th, and there's a 45-day contract period. The next project to touch on, the Fifth Street Drainage Project, city council approved a contract just under $118,000 for construction. Several months ago, the drainage collapsed under Fifth Street, just south of the bridge, and the construction on this project is close to getting started if it hasn't already started. We already had the pre-construction conference. Next slide that we have, Public Works, we have to maintain the spillways and the dams at the lakes, and Public Works has been clearing debris and trees and foliage at the Guthrie Lake Spillway. That's the before, and that's an after picture. Safe routes to the school project, new sidewalk along Walnut Street from Hill Drive to Hillcrest Avenue. That project is ready to go to bid. We will be working with the school district as far as timing of that project. Fairground road improvements. This was a joint effort between the county and the city. That road is kind of split. Half of it's owned by the county and half of it by the city. And my understanding is the city paid for the asphalt and the county did the work to lay it and prepare the road. The next slide, the Oklahoma International Bluegrass Festival, of course, is this week, Thursday through Friday, October 5th through 7th. The city provides support in many ways to this festival, and this is just an example of Public Works setting the T-post and the fencing for the event. We do mowing a lot of things to accommodate this big event in our community. The next one shows demolition and cleanup of Banner School Site. We did that project in-house, so it saved us a lot of money versus putting it out for bid and have a contractor do it using our crews. The next one, I know we just talked about that, but for the viewer's benefit, the Banner Park Concept Plan would provide several new amenities and options, including small, single-family picnic areas, our first splash pad, ADA playgrounds, walking trails, parking, Parks Department facility and public restrooms. The city was able to save the Banner School Monument, which will be included in the project as a monument marker for the park. The next slide is just a prototype of the type of picnic shelters, smaller picnic shelters geared towards one or two families in the park. The next slide, as approved by the city council, the Community Foundation of the Central Electric Cooperative provided a $100,000 grant to the Fire Department. This grant will be utilized to purchase two multipurpose portable ventilator devices for our ambulances. It proved at a recent meeting FEMA Assistant to Firefighter Grant, $310,996. That's a 90% grant with a 10% match, and the funding will be utilized to purchase eight cardiac monitor devices that are carried on the department's ambulances and rescue units. We recently received a Highway Safety Grant Award of $13,500, and this reimbursement grant will allow the police department to work traffic-specific overtime with the GOV for reducing injury collisions in Guthrie. On September 30th, hosted the Airport Community Day and Fly-In. Multiple activities out there and events geared towards youth that may take an interest in aviation in the future. Library keeps coming up with activities, Tech Tuesday at the library with Meridian Technology. And they have things, a series of events, five basic tips for working with Windows, another one techniques for better internet search, working with your Windows 7 computer. The last one is on October 10th, choosing the right social media for your business. So our library director continues to explore ways to make the library a meaningful place for our residents. The 2017-18 Chamber of Commerce Leadership Guthrie Class, attending maker, our Public Works Directors participating in this year's class. Directors participating in this year's class. We think this is a very meaningful and good program, and our desire is to try to have someone from the city probably in, in the class each year. Next slide is a picture of celebrating the grand opening of Taco Bueno in our community. Discovery Oklahoma is going to feature Stacy's Place. So that'll be coming up in the future showing of Discovery Oklahoma on Saturday evening. We did a press release for the Guthrie Job Corps. The Guthrie Job Corps Center reported that the center has a capacity of 532 students, but that enrollment currently stood at 408. Unless they approve by the end of October, they could potentially lose 30 to 50 local jobs. Hearing that, the city worked with the Guthrie Job Corps to do a news release to get that out and try to get some exposure for them. And this one actually had some impact. It's my understanding from the Job Corps, they recently met with the Department of Labor, and the, they had seen this news release, and they were not fully aware of the involvement of Job Corps and their support to nonprofits and city on the different projects they do, and the amount of support they had in the community. And it was one of the factors they used to decide to not reduce the work staff when they met with them at the Job Corps that it does not lose any positions. So it's kind of nice when you work with local industry for these kind of things. But I think it's a clear example of the need for a full-time economic developer, doing business and industry retention, expansion efforts like this. It's, it's easier to keep 50 jobs than to go out and recruit 50 new ones to take their place. And then to, of course, try to recruit new business industry. And the last item I have, the City Employee Movie Night in the park on Friday, October 13th. Of course, city council members and their family are invited. It's an appreciation effort to show our employees our appreciation for their meaningful impact on our community. We're going to watch the movie Goosebumps in Mineral Hills Park and have hamburgers and hot dogs. That's just some of the highlights of what's been going on at City Hall.
That's pretty awesome. That's all I got to say. That is pretty awesome. What you just, ladies and gentlemen, what you just observed in the last five or six, seven minutes was a city on the move. I think that's pretty, pretty significant. Well done, well done. Item number 10, comments by members of the city council. Councilman Smedley.
Thank you, staff, as always, and I think we all need to keep Las Vegas in our hearts this week, and looking forward to a new update in four weeks.
Councilman Buthroyd.
Yeah, I'll ditto that with Las Vegas and staff, and I do want to put out a little special recognition to Leroy tonight, because I think he deserves it. I think he's doing a great job.
Thank you. Wouldn't be possible without the team of city employees we have.
There you go.
It's a great team. Councilwoman Paget.
Well, I agree with everybody so far. So that takes care of that, Leroy. You're doing a great job.
Thank you.
And I'm certainly glad I'm retired, because I think you guys work really hard. And I appreciate it very much.
Councilman Taylor.
I did of that, and I'm glad to have Councilwoman Cheryl Paget back. She's been gone for a while.
I've been on vacation.
Vacation. So I'm glad you're safe and you're back. Appreciate what staff does, and how about those cowboys, anyway? Never a dull moment.
No, there isn't, there isn't. There's always balance here, there's always balance. Congratulations to all those individuals involved with the Guthrie Escape over the past, this past weekend. Good success there. Obviously, huge involvement by, by the city to assist all of the merchants and so forth in making that happen. But another really positive thing for our community, as Leroy has already identified, Bluegrass coming up this weekend, International Festival bringing people from all corners of the world here to Guthrie, America, and, and to our library on steroids. But another opportunity to show off our great, our great community. Healthy communities, we talked a little bit about health, workplace. We've got some things going on with healthy communities. And one of the things that's starting tomorrow is a walk to school opportunity, as I've been told, and I'm actually going to be walking to school.
Are you going back to school?
I, I, I've been told I need to do that by some, some people. But I understand that people that want to walk with their children, or just walk with a child to Fogarty, should meet at 7:30 at First Christians Church. If they have a child that they want to walk to, to, that goes to St. Mary's, to meet at Highland Hall at, also at 7:30. Or at GUESS, students, or, or parents, or anybody that wants to walk, goes, meets at the Armory at 7:30, that's where I will be. So if you would like to see the mayor walk at 7:30, be at the Armory, and we'll walk those students to GUESS. Just a lot, a lot of great things going on. We've got one of the best haunted houses in the state, right here in Guthrie. You could check out Guthrie Haunts, I think, dot com, if you want to go and, and see what that's like. So anyway, again, lots of great, great things going on. Item number 11, Consider Approval to Convene to Executive Session to Discuss Negotiations with the Police. And item B is to discuss the purchase or appraisal of property concerning the Regional Sports Complex. So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Submit your votes. See the votes. Unanimous approval to go into executive session. Thank you very much.